Okay.
Okay, well, let's start with the two-minute statements, starting with you, Jan.
And is the statement supposed to focus solely on the community center?
No.
Okay.
No.
Just an introduction.
While you're running.
Who are you?
Yeah. Who am I? I am a candidate for reelection to the Los Altos City Council. I have lived in Los Altos for 31 years and have been your council member for the last four. I was your mayor in 2015. As you know, we all rotate, and so that was my turn to be mayor. It was last year, a lot of fun. And for those of you that know me, I'm a good listener, and I respectfully listen to everyone who has something to share. I believe that the more people who are involved in our community, the better decisions we can make. And one of the things that I led when I had my first term was the open government ordinance, which is why you now see the city council agenda published in the town crier the week before the city council agenda. It wasn't just to give you guys more revenue. It was to actually get more information out there to the residents. And the other thing was to, that was part of that, was to include story polls for new commercial developments so that people could see what the size and mass of proposed developments were going to be and to not be surprised that all of a sudden a building went up and they had no idea that something was going to go up and that it was going to be that large. So it provides a huge visual alert of what's being proposed. Professionally, I work in the energy field. I am the CEO of Minzila Clean Energy, which is the community choice energy provider for San Mateo County. And I led the effort for Los Altos to become a part of the Santa Clara Valley's equivalent, which is the Silicon Valley Community Energy Authority, which will start delivering cleaner and greener energy to all of Los Altos starting in April of 2017. People have told me that they appreciate that I ask the hard questions at our council meetings. You can continue to have confidence in me that I will continue to ask the hard questions and not just accept the staff reports for what they are. I promote the qualities of transparency and integrity and feel like I have a pretty good sense for what the pulse of this community is. So I'm hoping that the community will return me to the council for the next four years. And thank you all for coming tonight. I thought, actually, that no one was going to come. So good for you. You must all be like I did and send your VCRs to the debate, and we'll watch it when we get home.
Thanks, Bruce. So, good evening, everybody. I also want to thank everybody for coming out this afternoon. As Jan and Maria have both said, we're competing with the presidential debate, so we're really appreciative of having all of you here. And I'm happy to see some new faces. I think Barbara was saying earlier, this is her first forum because we've had two already. So thank you for coming out. So Nisa Flatter, and I'm running for Los Altos City Council. And I'm running because I believe I have the right experience and right energy to be an effective leader on council. I graduated from Georgetown Law back in 2010, and I'm currently the senior lead counsel for the supply chain organization at HP. Before that, I worked for Santa Clara County for over nine years. And in that capacity, I worked directly with the departments and the department heads, really understanding the nuts and bolts of local government and how local government works. I'm currently the vice chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. Proud to see other commissioners here tonight as well. And I was also the vice chair for the grant writing committee a couple of years ago. I've also been involved in other community events and also the Los Altos Lead Program. My husband and I chose Los Altos to raise our family. I have an eight-year-old son and a four-year-old daughter because we really appreciated the values of Los Altos and we were attracted to the charm and character of the city. You know, family and community are priorities here, and we really value that. So based on my experience as an attorney, city council is a legislative body, former local government employee, HP employee, mom of a young family, my involvement in the community, vice chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and just my love for serving the community, I really believe I'll be an effective leader and will add value to council. My four main goals: one, be a voice for Los Altos on regional issues; make traffic safety a priority; tackle the existing issues facing our city and identify long-term solutions; and ensure Los Altos continues to be a great place, the reason we all moved here and still live here, for seniors, families, and the entire community. So I'd be honored to serve our community, and I look forward to having this conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Nisa. All right, Steve, you're up.
All right, thank you. So thanks to the CCA for hosting us this afternoon, and again, thanks for the new faces that are coming out today. My name is Steve Smiley, and I'm running for Los Altos City Council because I have the desire to serve the city with my leadership. I understand that Los Altos has many diverse and controversial challenges, one of which, of course, is the community center that meets the community needs. Look, I'm a Los Altos resident and home there for 20 years. My wife and I were married in Los Altos 13 years ago at the Los Altos Lutheran Church, right there on the corner of El Monte and Cuesta. We have an 11-year-old daughter, Caitlin, who goes to the Covington Elementary School on Covington. And we are big dog people, as we talked earlier. We have a Bernice Mountain Dog and a yellow lab. I am actively involved in volunteering at our local public schools, the church, and other community nonprofit organizations as executive board and on the executive council. I have a very diverse education. I have a BS in engineering, a master's of business administration, and a Juris Doctor of Law. Professionally, I'm vice president of program management and contracts at L3 Communications, and I'm also on the Ethics Steering Committee at L3 Communications. My core strengths are my communication skills and ability to connect with people, my financial and business expertise and decision-making, and leadership based on my values. And those values are integrity, accountability, and respect. My goal is to elect a diverse town that caters to young families; be an establishment of downtown and a civic center that also needs to be green and environmentally friendly; and third, I want to action between town, school district, commissions, and community groups. My goal is to spend the rest of our lives in Los Altos and retire. And I want to use my core strengths to move Los Altos forward and grow smartly. I have the vision, experience, volunteering, vision, and leadership capabilities to work with council members and bring closure to the challenges that the city faces and still preserve what we cherish about Los Altos. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Steve. All right, well, I'll provide a few votes, the first and series of questions that we've developed here. So Steve, I'm going to start with you. Please share what ideal process for creating community-centered solutions would entail and how you would work on the council to move this process forward.
Well, I think it's important for gaining community-wide input. And when I say "community-wide," I'd be looking for input from South Los Altos. I'd be looking for input from the Los Altos School District. I'd be looking for input for the seniors. I think all of those are very valuable because they would be the people that would be using the community center over the rest of us. We've kind of all seen what happened with Measure A in the past, and I think that was, part of that issue was not going out and getting the backup from those specific groups going forward. So I think it's very important to come up with that innovative process to get them involved, to get them to buy in on that going forward.
Good. All right, Nisa? Good time you do.
Right on. 90 seconds?
Again, so that you've got it down. Please share your vision of what an ideal process for creating community-centered solutions would entail and how you would work with, on the council, to move this process forward.
Thanks, Bruce. So an ideal process, and at the beginning, Maria mentioned the different community-centered solutions that CCA supports. And so in order to have an ideal process, the first thing you need to do is have clear objectives about what you want to achieve at the end of this process. You also need to look at what has already been done, and so you can learn from that as opposed to spending resources on time on something that has already been done. I also think we need to engage the entire community. And when I say "the entire community," all the different groups that make up Los Altos, all the different corners of Los Altos. And because we're looking at different solutions, we will have to utilize different techniques and different approaches to ensure that we're engaging everybody in our community. We also need to make sure that we validate participation so you don't have the same people participating every time, and so you have full representation of the community. And, you know, the second part of that question asks, how would I achieve that as a council member? You know, I talked about my experience at the beginning, and one of my strengths is collaborating and serving in leadership position where I'm able to identify common issues and move it forward. And as a council member, after going through this detailed process that I just described, then I would work with my colleagues on council to identify common ground that aligns with the interest of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Is that enough time?
Actually, Gary.
We need to...
Let her finish the sentence, so that'll be okay.
Oh, all right.
I was going, I was saying I would work with the other members on council to see that process through. You know, manage, vetting, and implementation of that process will be key. Thank you.
In the future, I'll raise my hand.
15 seconds.
Do you need me to repeat the question?
I have a vision of an ideal process for the community center.
Okay. All right, Ms. Pepper.
Okay. Well, you know, when we did the community outreach for Measure A or before Measure A, we did do, we tried to reach a lot of the community. And it's really easy to talk about, oh, I would do this, I would do that. But it's really hard to actually reach all the people in the community. And those people who decide they don't agree with your solution are the ones who said, you never asked me. But be that as it may, what we really need to do is look at what we did before and make sure we don't do that again, right? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and thinking you're going to get the different results. But, you know, we need to reach out to all the different constituencies, which we did try to do, but obviously didn't reach everyone. The seniors, the people who use it right now, the schools. Go into the neighborhoods more and try to talk to people. And rather than requiring people to come to a meeting, go to where the people are and, you know, going out to the neighborhoods, going to the schools. And we probably didn't do enough of that. Engaging the entire community with high-tech and high-touch approaches. And also, we should be reaching out to Los Altos Hills. I think one of the things we didn't do was to bring them into the conversation because they might be able to help fund something, as well as do look at for public-private partnerships with other groups and out to the philanthropic community to see if there are people who would, again, like to maybe have their name on a building and put some effort into it. Was your hand raised because I was...
That's it, your time.
With a little beep.
Something that you touched on, actually, all of you did regarding, you know, the fact that you need to reach out more to the public instead of having the public show up to a charrette or what have you and have the same 75 people show up. So, mentioned tech, possible tech solutions and maybe drawing people or getting people's input. Can you describe, Jan, can you describe an example of how maybe employing a high-tech solution would help to draw more input or something like this?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of our candidates, Alex, has talked about this a lot. But basically, there are apps out there that people can use where you can survey people and make sure that you're not, that everyone just gets their answer in once, that you can't, like, stuff the ballot box with your approaches. I'm not a tech person, but I'm sure there are people out there who know how to do this better than me. But there are a lot of firms who are trying to provide or come up with high-tech solutions. One of them that we're using right now in the city, which I'm not saying is a great, necessarily greatest, open government, where you can pose a question and then people respond back to that. But I'm sure there are other ones. We had a community engagement roundtable a couple of years ago, and we had a fellow from Palo Alto Planning Department demonstrate an app where they were building a project downtown Palo Alto, and there was a UR or that little thing, what's it called?
QR code.
QR code. And you take your cellphone and you somehow or other get, take a picture of it, and then the survey comes up and you can respond to it. So he thought that that was working pretty well in Palo Alto to get people's response on what that building looked like. So I know there's a lot of stuff that's being done, and certainly we should be looking into that because people don't necessarily want to come to a meeting, but they do want to provide their input.
So, Nisa, anything you want to add to that in terms of tech solution? Or is just the old-fashioned way of just getting, going door-to-door and meeting people face-to-face? You can't beat that? Or will tech solutions be, you know, a better, smarter way of reaching as many people as possible?
I do think we need to have a combination of things. So the tech approach, and I agree, there are many apps out there, and I won't repeat what Jan has said. But there are apps out there that would allow us to reach a significant number of Los Altos. But I do think we still need to go into the neighborhoods, attend different meetings. For example, we have the senior program at Grant Park on Wednesdays. Go to those meetings where we know they're gathering and engage them in their own setting and their own meetings, at their own meetings. We also need to go to the schools. As the mom of a young family, my son just started third grade. I think it's important to go to schools, engage the parents, get their input as well. And even though they're Generation X and you would believe that, you know, the social media or apps are the best way to reach them, sometimes even Generation Xers would prefer the direct personal engagement or even hard copy documents. And I do think we should still have meetings where we invite them either to City Hall or a central place where they should come and attend. So I think we need to use different techniques, smart and creative techniques. And the follow-up is also key to ensure that we're having all these things check in to make sure they're working. Do we need to tweak anything? Do we need to change anything? Is there a particular group that we're not reaching that maybe we need to deploy a different technique? Quick example, I don't know if I have time on the part of...
Thank you. All right, Steve, come from a high-tech bench.
Well, I agree with Nisa on the combined. I think it's a combination of both the individual outreach and probably the crowds, the crowdsourced data that you'd look at. And I have, you know, a couple of categories of it and broken out. We look at deliberate polling, emails, social media, neighborhood meetings, the community events. We talked about canvassing and then online surveys and looking at the crowdsourced data. Look at our online apps that we had talked about for that. And then it's a combination of taking that data and, once you have it, getting together and discussing how you go forward and what it actually means. I think that's almost as important as collecting the data, is getting it and assessing it and see what it means.
Good, thank you. All right, so, Nisa, past efforts for civic center involved community participation and surveys. It appears that the process did not reflect the wishes of the community. Do you think community involvement is important? Do you have thoughts on how a new effort might be more successful? This kind of tap dances on what we just addressed. Anything further you want to add to that?
Yes, Bruce. So in addition to what we've already discussed, I've been precinct walking, and even before I decided I was going to run, I talked with many people. And there are different reasons why people believe Measure A failed. People felt like they didn't understand what was being proposed. They didn't have the details. But a lot of people also questioned the amount of the bond, the $65 million amount, why it was so much, how it was going to be spent, whether or not the city explored public partner partnerships or alternative sources of funding. And so I think going forward, we definitely need to explore that. Jan mentioned Los Altos Hills. But we also need to explore whether or not there are private partners out there that would be willing to come to the table and work with us so that we can minimize the financial impact on the community.
Okay. Jan, anything you want to add?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. You know, past efforts, Jan, for a civic center involved community participation in surveys. It appears that that process did not reflect the wishes of the community as Measure A showed. Do you think community involvement is important? And do you have thoughts on how a new effort might be more successful?
Of course, community involvement is essential.
Okay.
The community center, so the community needs to be involved, of course. You know, I think we need to look at the lessons learned from what we did before. We need to have the right consultants on board. I don't think we have the right consultant on board for the whole process of reassessing what had been proposed back in 2009. And we brought the same consultant back, and that was not a good thing to do. We have to look at additional partners, and we need to see how we might be able to fund something like this with our own funds. You know, we scale it down. Do we need to go out to the community? You know, we just got some bad advice. We followed the suggestions of the consultant as far as the bond measure. He said, "Don't provide a lot of detail. Keep it all very general and high level." And it's like, you can't do that in this community. This is an intelligent community. You're kind of, you know, it was like, what's the right word?
Engaged. Engaged?
It was like pulling it over. It was just, it was just like, you know, it was insulting to the community that we didn't provide more information and that the advice was, if you don't, you know, that you'll just be able to pull the wool over everyone's eyes and get this through. And it's like, no. And it felt like that to me as we were going through the campaign for it. It's like, this is not going to work. This is going to lose because people want information and we're not providing it.
So at the time where you're thinking, this is stupid, but I guess he's the expert.
No. Gary has his hand. I didn't agree with which, but I'm one vote. So that's one thing to keep in mind, is that you need to have a council. If you can get something through, it can be one person who disagrees, but the other four vote for it.
Ellie, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I can add to a few things. So first of all, I think it was more than just sending out surveys and looking at that. Going around canvassing the neighborhood, I've asked about that going forward. And a lot of the response I got was, you know, Los Altos... ...strategy that didn't quite work, that maybe wasn't the right answer. So you look at the other options, private-public funding to maybe do part of it. Look at what we have in our general fund to do part of it. Maybe a loan for part of it so we keep some money in the general fund. So those are the options that need to be discussed in the city council, go through that. And of course, on the legal side, you got to get buy-in from everybody before you go forward in this. You got to make sure everybody's on board before you just put it out there. And that's keeping them engaged. Thank you.
All right. Good job. So...
Bruce, might I suggest you skip three if you guys don't mind? Just get excited for kind of getting more passed through.
Okay, sure, sure.
Go on to four, we can get back to it.
Okay. All right, good. All right, sure. All right, so, all right, so, Jan? Many of the city's facilities need significant upgrades. What priority do you place on a new community center among our other city needs? What about Grant Park, Redwood Grove, Garden House, et cetera?
You know, Bruce, I'm glad you asked that question because actually, at the city council meeting tomorrow night, we're getting, part of the report is the assessment of some of the other, you know, one at the civic center. So City Hall, Police Department, Lacy, I think that's it. And yeah, there's people who want to see Halsey House redone at Redwood Grove. And we just painted the Grant Park multipurpose room. Actually, Grant Park was in the assessment that we're getting. So there are a lot of city facilities that need upgrades, and we do need to prioritize that. Interestingly, when I read the report that the consultant put together for the facilities, kind of the facility that was in the worst shape, according to him, or needed the most money, was City Hall. And it's like, really? And, you know, the upgrades kind of fall into a few different categories. One is ADA, making things ADA compliant. And certainly, every public facility needs to be ADA compliant because it belongs to people and, you know, it needs to be accessible. So I actually will have some questions at tomorrow night's council meeting because we do have ramps at City Hall. It's like, well, are those not appropriate? Are they not wide enough for someone in a wheelchair? So I'm curious about that. Others are like roofs need to be replaced, bathrooms need to be redone, electrical needs to be upgraded. So those are kind of the areas where the city facilities need upgrades. And it is kind of a difficult decision. It's like, well, if we're going to knock down Hillview, for example, to put up a new community center, or the same with the Grant Park, if we're going to get rid of that, you know, when is that going to happen? And based on that timing, should we put money into keeping these buildings going for a little while or just not? So we need to have a discussion about that. That's where community input is important.
So would you place, so would you place the community center? Maybe we can get to that, but maybe Grant Park and Redwood Grove and Halsey House need more attention, and then we can address the community center later? Or I guess the question is the priority?
I think the community center is first. The community center at Hillview and at Grant Park is first. I don't think there's a strong need for Halsey House at this point in time. Redwood Grove is a nature preserve. And, you know, to try to get more people down there because there's a building there, I don't think that's a higher priority than the community center, which will serve many more people.
Okay. Good. Nisa? So, again, the question, many of the city's facilities need significant upgrades. What priority do you place on a new community center among our other city needs?
So I'm happy to hear the city is doing this facility study to get a current status on the condition of our city buildings. And I will either attend or listen in to the meeting tomorrow. But I do think it's important that you look at the condition of the buildings, and they need to meet the basic requirements. They need to be safe buildings, they need to be ADA compliant. And I think that's the base point, that's where you start. I was part of a group that toured the community center on Saturday. And, you know, I look forward to looking at the facilities report, but for example, if that building is not safe, then that definitely moves up on the list. And so I think all the buildings are currently not safe, should be at the top of the list, where we need to make them safe, especially if members of our community are using them. Once we have taken care of that issue, safety, then I think we need to look at what's a priority for the community and figure out where do we want to start. We also need to look at funding because, you know, we have our general fund. We don't know when the next recession is going to hit, so we want to make sure we have money for a rainy day. And we also have other basic necessities in the community, the sewer, the roads that we need to take care of. And so I think once we start looking at priorities, we need to figure out what are the needs of the community and where should we start and why should we start there? And what will be the funding associated with going down that road?
Steve?
So I absolutely positively believe it's a holistic approach of the civic center along with downtown. That has to be our number-one priority. I had a chance to go down and visit Grant Park this last week, Wednesday. I went down for their potluck. That's another facility that I think needs to be looked at along with the Hillview Civic Center. Well, so I would group that into those three as tops on the list, the highest vote-getters for that. You know, talking about civic centers this last week, I had the opportunity to go visit the Red Morton Community Center to look at what that had to offer. And also went to Livermore, the Livermore Community Center. Those were some interesting new designs and new architecture that went into that that we could probably take into consideration for ours here. Because something like that, where you could see, it was something for the whole family. So kids, toddlers, adults, non-seniors, seniors, for everybody to take part. And then, of course, the base part of that is, Nisa, is the thing, how are we going to finance it? So I think that has to be taken into consideration. And I would look at that going forward as maybe we give the community a three-option phase. Call it the $20 million version, the $40 million version, the $60 million option. The three options to look at that and get their input of that instead of just giving them, here, here's one option, take it or leave it. Just take a look at three different options.
Okay. Let's see, how are we on questions from the audience? Let's see, how are we on questions from the audience? Sorry, bud. Any one? Okay. There's a good one. Okay, would you support a smaller bond community center versus Measure A? Steve, do you want to answer that?
You know, I feel, answer is yes, it's going to have to be smaller. The question is, is it going to be a bond issue at all? Or do we look at what we have in our general fund, combine it with some of the other funds, cover it all with money we already have, take out a loan, or look for some private-public investment? Or maybe it's a combination of all three or four? So those are all solutions that I think we'd have to take a look at and address as a council. Three votes here, right?
To answer that question would be putting the cart before the horse. Because I do think you need to engage the community, figure out priorities, better understand, because that's one of the reasons why Measure A failed, because we didn't, the community felt they weren't engaged and their needs weren't reflected. And so we first need to understand that before I can answer the question about whether or not I would support going out for a smaller bond. And so I think if there's sufficient justification, there's community support, and there's a clear plan forward with clear details to support a smaller bond, then I would do it.
Okay. Ms. Pepper?
Question is, would I support a $20 million bond?
Or would you support a smaller bond?
Not at this point in time, because I don't think we've really looked at, looked under every rock to see where every possible kind of funding would come from. So first, we need to define what it is we would want to build and how much that's going to cost. And then we look at the general fund, we have $62 million in other funds that, as Jean Mordaunt regularly reminds us at the council meetings, we're earning 0.7% on. So why, and then we also, the city has no debt. So with interest rates at historic lows, it may make sense to take out a loan for $20 million at, you know, 2.5% interest or whatever. So we really need to look at all the different financing mechanisms. And as I said before, bringing in Los Altos Hills, looking at philanthropists in our community in Menlo Park, you know, if you go look at their community center, Ariaga's name is all over everything. Okay with me if we have an Ariaga-type person here in Los Altos who wants their name over everything and will help to fund something, that's, that's great. Then, you know, certainly we should be looking at that too and reaching out to those members of our community who, who are interested in that and would like to help make it happen.
Another question from our studio audience, should any redevelopment of the city's 18 acres include extra parking for use by downtown? Would a downtown parking improvement district pay for that? Uh, let's see, who wants to start with that? How about you, Nisa?
Yeah, you haven't gotten to go first yet. Yeah, and it goes back to the whole idea of having a holistic approach about what we want to do on the 18-acre parcel. And I think once you have that plan in place and we identify what the community wants to see on that 18-acre parcel, then we can figure out whether or not we could put parking there to support the downtown. I do believe that when we're doing visioning for downtown, there should be some connection with the civic center. And that's because, and the parking could be a good example, where, you know, maybe there are things that would support both sites that can be located at the civic center or vice versa. So for example, it could be the opposite, where we, I don't know if you're familiar with Lacey proposing, building an underground parking garage off of First Street with a park on top. And so, you know, would that parking be sufficient so we wouldn't need to have parking at the civic center or vice versa? So I do think we need to look at both sites together to make these types of decisions.
Okay. All right. Stephen?
Yes. So, you know, as, as Nisa said, I think we have to understand what it's going to look like with downtown, because it definitely has to be connected to downtown. And when you address that, you can kind of take into account some of the concepts that were developed in the opportunity study back in 2009, if you read through that. To go along with that, I wouldn't just jump on automatically hitting a parking structure. I went to the Lacey presentation and, you know, that's a, that's a good option to consider for private-public investment there, to come up with a parking structure to do that. There's other things you can do before you do that, which apply to management of parking downtown. And by that, one example is you could re-stripe, do some re-striping. Part of the studies show we can get an additional 280 parking spots with just re-striping. And there's also putting in parking meters, a few things to do before we just add a parking structure. Thank you.
Jan?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. These 18 acres include extra parking for use by downtown. Would a downtown parking improvement district pay for that?
Okay. Well, as you know, we're, we just hired a consultant to do our downtown visioning. And unfortunately, that visioning right now is really focused on downtown and it's not covering downtown and the civic center, which I think it should because they are connected and we want to keep them connected. So if we're talking about extra parking for downtown at the civic center, we need to know what that connection's going to be between the two. And some ideas that I've heard is if you have underground parking, maybe it goes under San Antonio Road, right? So you, you park under there and you come up either on the civic center side or come up on the downtown side. Or there's a bridge across the San Antonio where we can, like, there's lots of interesting things that I've seen. You know, people in our town like to park right in front of where they're going to go, but, because otherwise, there's not enough parking. But we need to have places that people want to go on throughout the downtown and throughout the civic center so that wherever you park, you're close enough to where you want to be because there are also lots of other places, you know, five or 10 other spots you want to visit before you, you leave. As far as a parking assessment district, I know that there, you know, I know Gary was on the parking, the parking committee that we have yet to see the report that they came up with, which I hope will happen soon. But I think that was one of the things that they explored and I'm really interested to, to look at that. That might be a good idea as well.
Okay. Bruce? Perfect timing. All right. So Steve, if a new community center is slated for development, do you think it is important to pay attention to and plan?
By open communication, clear communication, and let them know, we hear you. We know why you are concerned about Measure A, we know why Measure A failed. And so here we are, trying to address it and trying to do things a little bit differently based on your concerns.
Steve?
So, yeah, the number that we looked at was 62 million of funding. And I actually sat through a 20-minute dissertation with Mr. Mordaunt and we went through all of the funds and then added up to roughly 62 million. Comes from capital, comes from parks, comes from general fund, all those added up. So the question is, what strategies for funding would we look at going forward? And, you know, I go through my checklist, we already talked about a few things as a group, but there's also a parcel tax, special tax district, grants, and capital campaign. We could look at, you know, the potential for our creative and realistic mechanisms for raising capital to that as well. So those are some, you know, outside of, outside of the box thinking, as well as not going just with the bond, bond approach.
Okay, fair enough. Let's see here. You know, one of the things that this group, CCA, seems to support is, you know, a holistic, I hear the word holistic approach. And part of it is the idea of somehow connecting the downtown experience with the community center experience. Where do you guys, I mean, I hate to sound vague, but where do you folks stand on that kind of philosophy in terms of somehow integrating the downtown with the community center? And would you have any specifics on how you could visualize kind of a synergy happening there? So, let's see, who wants to take that big one on? Okay. Steve, we'll go with Nisa.
Gee, thanks. I was thinking. Not gaining it, we're just trying to be fair. So I do support considering both locations in the visioning process. And I actually attended the city council meeting where they were approving the contract for the visioning consultant for downtown. And as part of that discussion, the day they were approving the contract, you know, one of the questions was whether or not they would consider the civic center. And that was something that city council, maybe Jan who said it, wanted the consultant to do as well. Because I do think it's important, we have two prime locations in proximity to each other. And if a consultant is solely looking at the downtown area, the consultant may try to fit everything in that location, thinking we need everything here, we need, you know, restaurants, shops, a theater, everything here. Whereas if they're considering this other parcel, they may be able to say, well, maybe this is more appropriate over here, as opposed to trying to find an area in downtown for this type of facility. And so I think it's very important for the visioning consultant or the city to consider both in the planning going forward. There are a lot of synergies, you know, we talked about the parking garage earlier, you know, maybe the parking garage over here would support any improvements in building we do over at the civic center location. Was that your question, Bruce? Just whether or not I support considering both locations in a, in a visioning process?
Yeah.
I do. And the holistic approach would consider both sites. And I will add that I, you know, there are other business districts in, in the city. There are other parks and city locations that we should also consider as part of the process. Because again, if there's a better location for a certain facility, somewhere else in the city that would still serve our needs, that's something that should be considered.
Do you have any ideas for, you know, how to make a connection? One thing, for instance, that my boss, my publisher, Paul Nyberg, often talks about is put in the library as almost as part of a bridge across San Antonio. And saying that that could be like this, kind of this place where, you know, people from the downtown could go visit, people from the civic center could go visit. Now, I mean, that's obviously, you know, you know, out there, which is great.
Right.
But, I mean, do you have any ideas like that, infrastructure-wise, that could unite? I mean, building some kind of a bridge?
I definitely wouldn't want something so high that would block our views of the hills as we're driving down San Antonio. I actually like that view and I think a lot of people appreciate that view as well. But I do think we should explore either the underground parking that would somehow connect both sites. If there's a bridge, I, it ties in with the whole idea of being a more bike pedestrian-friendly community. And so instead of having. I don't know, but I could support having that kind of link between both sides. And, you know, you could have signs pointing so people know, okay, you know, you can go over across the bridge if you want to go to the library or whatever, whatever facility you decide when people are in the civic center. But I definitely like the idea of finding some link to merge the two in some fashion.
What do you think, Steve?
So, you know, one, I think we've all agreed, ask for a holistic approach. And the challenge is going to be, how are we going to connect the civic center to downtown? I know Mr. Nyberg is from Illinois, so he knows that in several highways in Illinois, there's actually restaurants that go over there. So I was thinking maybe a restaurant that serves wine that has a view. So, yeah, I've seen a few of the development schemes that are out there, that has a bridge and have restaurants on there, we talked about potential library. I think those are potential options that we could look at. And of course, the architecture of that would be very important to make sure it stays within the Los Altos.
Dr. Pepper?
It just keeps coming, doesn't it? It just keeps coming.
That's my brother, but, seriously. Yes, of course, we should look at a holistic approach and look at the civic center and the downtown together. The reason that we're currently not doing that is because of one of our council members, Mary, now owns property downtown. And so she's supposedly conflicted and so if you separate the downtown from the civic center look, then she can work on the civic center and then recuse herself from the downtown. I think we need to look at what's best for the city. I like Mary a lot and, you know, the fact that she wouldn't be able to participate if we holistically put them together, that's unfortunate. But I think looking at those together is what is best for the city and that's what we should be doing as opposed to doing what's best for certain council members. So, you know, that's just the way it is. But yeah, but we've seen some pictures of like, I think there's that bridge somewhere that's like a kissing bridge and, you know, you put it out, it's like special places that are really romantic places.
Lady of Whistle, bud.
Yes, yes.
All right, you're tied up.
I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but, you know, I think we need to be creative, think outside the box.
You know, I wanted to go back to that, to keep up the environmental part of that. I don't know if you've been by the space blocks and buildings, I'm not sure. They actually have a park on top of their building, trees, bushes, track to walk up there. Very, very nice. That's another concern.
All right, you're out of order now.
I'm sorry.
We're comfortable, we're down to the last 10 minutes, so again, we could do one more question or maybe have a wrap-up. Why don't we do a wrap-up?
Let's do one question. Let's just do one more question.
Oh, right, you can wrap up. All right. All right, let's see. Yeah. All right, I'm just kind of looking through these.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
You haven't covered a lot. Let's see, I'm just trying to avoid things that are repetitive because a lot of this stuff kind of weaves, weaves into, back into like similar emphasis that we're getting. Building height is a big issue in Los Altos. Do you have any suggested limits for buildings on the Hillview site? Jan, let's start with you.
Okay. Well, I think we have to take into consideration the people that live across the street from Hillview. So, you know, they're in single-story homes, I guess someone could build a, if that was a residential street on both sides, the other side of the street could also be homes. And I, I don't know what the total height limit is for a two-story home.
Thirty-seven? Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven feet? So I would think we wouldn't want to go any higher than what, what a second, a two-story home on the other side would be. But, you know, it's all, it's all a matter of design too, that, you know, if you put a big block over there that's 37 feet high, that's going to be something pretty ugly to look at if you live right across the street. As long as the, you know, the architecture is good, that you, you know, articulate the roof and the horizontal part and the vertical part, you know? We all know what good architecture is when we see it and.
So no higher than 48?
Well, I think no higher than what a two-story house would be allowed to be. But I don't know, I haven't really thought about it a lot. I think we would, again, we would need to make sure we talk to the neighbors because they'll certainly let us know if what we're doing isn't what they like.
Nisa?
So I definitely think we need to engage the neighbors, you know, talk to a couple people and obviously they were opposed to Measure A for different reasons, but that was part of the group that opposed Measure A. And, you know, their opinion clearly matters. You know, we're building something, we're putting something right next to them and so whatever we do there, we should reach out to that group, engage them, get their input. And so whatever plan we come up with should factor in their concerns. With regards to the height, you know, I, I don't have a height in mind, but I agree that it really depends on the architectural design of the buildings. And so, you know, we've heard many times, you can see a building and you think it's much taller than it is because of the design. But likewise, you can see a building and you think it's much shorter than it is because of the design. Because there are things you can do, setbacks, you know, layered, there are different design styles you can do to give a building the appearance of being much shorter. And so I think what should be the driving force again is identifying the need, what do we need on that site to reflect, what does the community want on that site? And then from there, decide how many buildings, the size of the buildings, and how can we design the buildings so that they still fit in with the whole charm and character of Los Altos, complementing downtown, the charm and character of downtown, the village feel. And so I think that's very important. And so I think that's very important. And so the height will really be determined by the design and the needs of what will actually go on the site. But I definitely don't want to see towering buildings or imposing buildings over there for many reasons.
Can it be taller than a two-story house if it's set back a ways from, say, Hillview?
It depends. It really depends. It depends on the design of that two-story house. You know, and if it's set back, is the second story, you know, not the same width as the first floor. It just depends on the design.
Stephen?
So, you know, I think everybody's hit on it, that architecture is a very important part of this. And when you're talking about height, you can also take into consideration FAR as a potential requirement with that. Last week, I went to a presentation, Gary hosted a sustainable cities presentation, and a lot of that, they showed us different looks at what a community would look like that isn't walkable, or part of their complete streets category. So if it has a pleasing look, it's more acceptable by people, and people will come and walk around and use it. So it goes back to that architecture. And not, maybe not solely a height factor, but again, as Nisa said, we don't want five-story structures sticking up in the middle of that. So it has to be architecturally pleasing, and maybe we use FAR as one of the requirements along with the height.
Sounds good.
Nice.
We're wrapping up. Okay, so yeah, let's do wrap-up statements from the group here. And Steve, we'll start with you.
Okay. I'm going to give you my 92nd wrap-up speech. You know, I think the three of the candidates here, I think we have agreed on most of the questions that have come out here. We're looking at the Civic Center and its holistic approach with the downtown. And I think it is very important that we look at the architecture of downtown and the Civic Center, and make sure it fits into our Los Altos community as a whole. I think with my background in engineering, my background with my MBA to look at financial impact, and my Jewish Doctor of Law to assess the contractual side of it, even going along with the statement of work, and the RFP that would go out to assess that, I think those are all great qualities that would go into making a good city council candidate. You know, I got my MBA and my JD while I was working full-time, and that took a lot of hard work. And I see city council being a lot of hard work. But I'm dedicated, and I'm willing to put that time in to be a great city councilor. So I ask for your vote on the break. Thank you.
Hey, Nisa, wrapping it up.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you so much for being such a great moderator. And thanks again to CCA and all of you for sitting through this. And Gary, I forgot Gary, the time. So as I mentioned at the beginning, I'm running because I believe I have the right experience and energy to be an effective member on city council. We've talked a lot about processes and getting things done as part of council, and the fact that you need three members on council to really get anything. And based on my unique experience of working for Santa Clara County for over nine years, really understanding the nuts and bolts of local government and how it works, I think that will add value to council. My experience as an attorney, city council is a legislative body, it is work. It involves policies, codes, laws. And so my attorney experience will also be valuable. I currently serve as the vice chair for the Parks and Rec Commission. We heard that the community center, the Civic Center, and a lot of what we've been talking about this evening touches on parks. And so my experience, having served on the Parks and Rec Commission, and having a good relationship with the commissioners and the community, and really understanding this issue, will also be valuable. I'm the mom of a young family, you know, my parent friends and family friends are excited to have me on council because they want me to be their voice, because parks again really matters to them and what happens at the Civic Center and downtown. So based on all those different experiences, I really believe I will add value. If I am a council member, I will work with the other members on council to identify common ground and move issues forward. I will engage the entire community using the different techniques that we've talked about already, but I also enjoy actually talking to people one-on-one and just listening. So I ask for your support, and I've received the support of different individuals, leaders, and organizations in the community, because they also recognize that I would be effective on council. So I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you again for coming. Thanks, Gary, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Jan, take us home.
Okay. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. I think this was probably a way more engaging discussion than what you would have seen on TV had you been home. Actually, it is more close to home. And that's, you know, that's what I like about being on city council. I really like the local government and the fact that you know the people that you're working with, that we can make an effect here in our community. And if we do a good job here, that might replicate itself in other communities. But what we do here really affects our lives, and it's an honor to be able to do that. It's been an honor having been on the council for the last four years, and I hope that you all will help to get me back there again. The experience that I've had over the past four years, I think, is helpful. When you first run, you have all these ideas of things you want to do, and then you get there, and it's like, you have to find the people to collaborate with you. You have to have people who are willing to listen to your ideas and, you know, who are willing to think outside the box. I think one of the most important things we need to do is improve our community engagement. That was one of the things that I was really interested in doing in the first term, and was able to do some of that. But then the council voted, I'm not quite sure what the vote was, to get rid of the ad hoc community engagement subcommittee that I was a part of. So I hope that we can get that going again, because if we have the community engaged and having their input and being able to reach out in many different ways, using many different processes, then we're going to have a more satisfied community. So thanks again, and enjoy the rest of your evening.